We recognize the guests.
We recognize the guests. They're in business.
You up to new business, Paul?
Yes.
There's currently thirty-nine prisoners in jail. Tim Turner told me earlier that they got all the heating system repaired. They had to put change of fan mode and stuff out. He said that was about $2,000 to get all the heating up. All of them were there. And we checked with Trina about the plumbers and she said her comment was in the text that the plumbers are doing real good.
So they're out there working on them?
Well, I don't know if they're currently out there, but apparently they have been. But there's no problems existing that I was told today. The payment shortfall is gonna be up. It's gonna be eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So it's up about seven hundred. Gail said financially right now because there's a lot of tax dollars coming in that's pretty solvent, but she said she didn't know exactly when it would start getting thin.
Sales taxes ought to get better, you know?
Well, she thought it would be better for December, but she doesn't know about it.
Are you staying three months behind on your collections? So I'm sure it'd be... Might be December, you know, it'll be in February, but Christmas out there, it ought to be... Well, it ought to be better than I think it should be if people have Christmas out. So it should be getting a little better.
We need to keep everybody shopping at home if we can. That's what... That's gonna be the... Managing our money and getting our tax income up is our only source of survival.
Rick, I had a question about painting. Kind of having a little bit of a problem finding someone that's bonded and insured.
Yes.
It wouldn't be that complicated for me to get insured, would it? If we hired somebody and they get by insurance for one particular job?
I'm not an insurance agent, but I'm sure... I don't know if they can buy it for one month at a time, though.
I didn't know if you could buy it for the job.
What, are you needing a painting contractor?
We need a... Everybody decided, you know, we'd like from the being insured from painting due to the scaffolding situation.
Sure.
But to find a painter that's bonded and insured is... Is not... Too many of them out there. And I... So my question was, could they get insured for one particular job?
Yeah, I'm sure you can.
What I mean with that being asked, no. I suppose you might...
You can get... You know, you can get insurance if you go on vacation. You can get trip insurance.
Well, I just don't know if y'all done lost jobs, I didn't know, you know, sometimes they don't get insured.
Party's all going, so we don't have a spike or...
They got a contractor that... In mind that doesn't have any insurance, Paul?
I haven't found one yet that does have insurance.
All of our local people contacted, did not have it.
Did not have it. I thought...
Does Merrill Paint got insurance?
Well, maybe we could just hire them and then they could figure that in on their bid.
Yeah, what you could do. Let them run over somebody who's insured and does have it. Then you'd have to charge for... I meant...
Right, but I didn't...
It takes two jobs. Yes, same thing. If the requirement... It's just a matter of...
I know, but I didn't...
Say if I said one of them had my insurance, I'd have to charge at a fee to their price to cover my three of them. And if I bonded, they would just have to pay what they bonded.
But I...
That would save them having to buy insurance for a couple years. If they can't get a one job policy. Have to be to me. They'd be the subcontractor.
Well, maybe we don't need a bond between them.
You have to be careful what you do.
I thought office insurance, please.
It ain't no... It don't... You don't make no money off of it. It's just a... I've done it for yes, helping them out, you know?
Because I got things I can't find.
It's pretty good customers, so...
You have to get insurance.
Really make no money off of it. It's pretty risky.
And we can get that lift upstairs to jail. Do a lot of this down here with that. Probably can be staircases and upstairs. Are y'all gonna paint upstairs, too?
I can use that lift that I got, that little one man lift.
How you gonna get up there?
Huh?
How you gonna get up to the second floor?
You're going elevator.
Yeah, will ya? Go through and scaffolding lift.
Are you leaning that thing down? How much weight the elevator carries?
Six hundred.
Six hundred?
It says it's high, though.
This is...
Six hundred. It says it's high, for sure, how many people? It was light.
Oh, he's up there, so it's... Roof on my house for me today and he told me he had insurance.
Let him watch all that on us that day.
Yeah, right, Frank.
What was it more of than this?
Lake area construction. They're insured.
I went to that Leachman Will's house, I remember long time.
He told me it was one. He's the one that painted inside that house. He had something to it. They did a good job. All of you. Check the lake area construction. They're insured.
They are? Where are they at, Ed?
Stay close.
I'll get his name and I'm naming that thing for you when we get through here, Mike.
He's putting a roof on my house for me today, so I know he's insured. I don't know about the bonding deal.
I would like... We don't want to get into that one. Be nice bad insurance.
Need to smell?
Want everybody to know this is our notice in the litigation against the county for Haskell County Criminal Justice Center. As long as the death of the suicide of Randy Barrios. What's your plans to do with this, Paul?
I guess first thing I'm gonna do is get some fast one. They got it.
Have they been notified yet?
No, I just... We just got it this morning, about ten minutes before you, so... Well, I didn't have time, but I thought you said in the statement... I'd like to consult with him.
That's more bad than five and twelve.
Five and twelve. I'm paying that. I've got that one.
Paul, I'd ask you out earlier for the meeting about the indebtedness created by the fire departments as far as payments for equipment. And you said you have no problem acquiring the amounts that these individual fire departments owe on equipment.
Right.
When can you make that available?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not off it. I can go over after the meeting. It ended today. I don't think it takes too long to pull that up. Well, it's not that late.
I know early on we talked about consolidation of purchasing insurance and stuff. Did y'all feel like there could be some benefit to shopping that? Versus the way they're doing it? Their equipment, their supplies, materials, their insurance? If you pull it all together, they're all buying an individual right now. We still feel like there's a great cost savings there if that was all compiled together. Probably get some better pricing.
Yeah, I found a... On that topic, I found another place in Killmore, Tyler, Texas, you know, sells fire equipment. So we can just have somebody to bid, you know, versus this at one place. And as far as insurance, I couldn't look into it.
Do they... Does each fire department now have a financial record or...
Yes, it's all... I hope there's some of it. Maybe I'm sure there's some of his POs here. Everything's signed right here.
But do they keep it right here or do you come on them?
Mm-hmm.
Do y'all ever examine them, look at them?
I look at them when they come across here. And no, I hadn't looked at them when it compiled up. Most time it's electric bills, water bills, gas bills, and the payments on their equipment. And then they will buy at times, granted, they will buy nozzles, fire, I mean, suits, you know, they don't get the grants because there's only so much money on the REIT grant every year and if every one department didn't get it, now they may buy some things like that once in a blue moon. But most time it's just the payment and the utility bills and where they charge the gas. You know, they just see that.
Does each... Does each town got a place they charge the gas, is that how that works?
Yes. Brooklyn, which is at Enterprise, they do it right there at Easy Mart, and a lot of them do it. And there's Sloans. Now, the ones in Kewaboo, I'm sure they have a charge count down there. Some states and some...
One place to get gas.
Yeah, but it's a way to go.
I think hardly everybody out of Kansas, that's why I'm... Look at it, it's close to five departments. For dance, you can't look through them.
Just about how they're on form.
Does the county buy fuel in the bulk or do they charge also?
It has to be bid on a Monday. I don't think it can be bid on another day, can it? Just on Mondays you can go out for bids on gas, phone quotes.
I don't know how much diesel or fuel the fire departments run, whether it would be feasible to put them on a bulk deal or not.
I don't know where they'd store it.
Yeah.
If they have some storage tanks.
Yeah.
Most of them... They don't... They don't burn that much, I mean, they burn gas, but it's not... They don't go through. Bill?
I don't know that one.
You had bulk gas and bulk fuel.
They had paper, well, that'd become my phone.
Well, they had to rent a brushy for it.
How you gonna know that much?
You don't have near.
Well, it's got the gallon. That may be on Friday or Saturday or Sunday, they didn't get it, but we're not... Or night.
Well, it'd have to be something like that. It couldn't be put one at the fire department because that, like Randy said, that might create more problems.
I tell you, no more gas may burn.
Yeah.
It'd probably cost you more than it saves you.
Yeah, it may not. I don't have a clue how much they actually burn, to be honest. Thinking out loud, really.
They don't...
I was thinking about...
Right, yeah, I've got... And I thought, and I've got that company out of Tyler, I met him at Adco, and I told them...
If you pull all of them, how many is there, eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven, so if you could pull all of them together and, you know, like, put them as a group, like buying their insurance, it might be a savings there. Their fire equipment, fire hoses, nozzles, and suits, and specialized equipment. I know everything they've got is almost specialized.
Yeah?
Probably some of them's got some suits, somebody else's quit and can, you know, use it, they've got together. Yeah, I don't know how to handle all that.
And they... They don't buy a lot of suits. I mean, sometimes when the REIT grant comes around once a year, they have some of them that use some suits, but that's not a...
I think their equipment, they've got a mate, how long they've been here.
Expiration they're going to take. That's not something that happens very often, they buy a lot of equipment on time, suits.
It'd be nice to look over and see what their expenditures are. It doesn't cost anything to find out if we can totalize all of it, to find out if there's some savings there. If there is, great, if there's not, then we try it.
We'll check it out when we leave here. Does anybody have any more new business, anything they want to talk about? All right, thank everybody for their comments and ideas. It's on item number five, signed appropriation, transfers, checks, received in POs. I'm gonna make a motion on item number five.
Paul Storey?
Yes.
Martin Allen?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes. Item number six is approved missing proceedings from previous meeting. I'm gonna make a motion to approve it, man.
Paul Storey?
Yes.
Parton saying?
Yes.
Martin Allen.
Ed Stone.
Okay, item number six. I mean, I'm sorry. Item number seven, approved blanket POs. We have three of them here today. I don't know if you missed it, two and two from the Sheriff's Department. I'll second it.
Parton saying?
Yes.
Paul Storey?
Yes. Member Agnes, discuss, consider approving monthly reports from Haskell County Treasurer's Office and Election Board. We need a motion on item number eight.
I don't know if I can. I'll say.
I'm in favor.
Martin Allen?
Yes.
Parton saying?
Yes. Yes. Item number nine is to approve or not approve holidays for 2017. When the Excise Board that does this, then we just...
Want to pay holidays?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. I'm counting now. So I would just go January 2nd, Independence Day. January 16th, Martin Luther King Day. February 20th, President's Day. April 14th, Good Friday. May 29th, Memorial Day. July 4th, September 4th, Labor Day. October 9th is Columbus Day. 10th is Veterans Day. November 23rd and 24th is Thanksgiving. December, which is Christmas, the 22nd through 25th. I let them look at that. How many days is that, Randy? Did you count? Do what? Yeah, they're ma- state mandate holidays.
This is, this is the same that you got now, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, pretty much. About eight or nine days. Do what? Eight or nine days, that's...
Eight more than nine.
Fourteen.
How many? It's fourteen days.
Only variation, probably Christmas, isn't it? Might change.
Yeah, Christmas changes things at some time.
Fourteen days total. You wanna see this?
Clark needs to look at it.
There's more we're having than none of what I had. For Union Days.
Well, we closed one, we stayed open one day for Union Days and we got, they were grabbing at us for being open. And last year we closed, they grabbed us for being closed. So I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what we're doing on Union Days.
He was up there randomly with you though.
I come to it, didn't say anything.
He was up there with Union Days, didn't he think so too? Most people was in and out.
He wasn't here, is he?
It was a weird deal.
I really hadn't even talked about it, Marla. But I just imagine it's been people coming out of here. So I don't know, we, we bought a paid holiday.
Well, the people that would come to use a court house can't even find a place to park. Yeah, that was so busy. Contesting.
Everybody could use a vacation day. Well, item number, need a motion for item number nine.
How much is it?
I don't pay it.
Yes.
Martin Owen?
Yes.
Paul Storey?
Yes. Item number 10 is to approve or not approve the two increases requested by the people, law and associates on the Chalk Town Nation project, known as PG Road.
How much are they talking about? Or, you know, how much are they talking about increases?
Yeah, they done it. Special forms that you said about that, you talked to us.
One increase is fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. And the second one is, I believe it's three, three thousand and something.
How much did you pay them for?
Fifty-six thousand, I lost my place. Two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
At least what the Chalk Town's paying for now.
The Chalk Town Nation paid for it. And I talked to Mr. Blankenship Wednesday, and he told me that he had approved it. Michael Oller with the BIA Transportation Division had sent us this email, then he had also talked to Bill. And the other one was three thousand and eight hundred dollars. They, um, rerouted the bridge for this project, and it's gonna save, it was over almost three, three hundred thousand by doing that.
We didn't reroute it, we just put it back where it was at.
Well, the plans changed.
Yeah, the plans, that's...
Plans changed, so it's gonna save.
The bridge, it was on the side.
Many on that, and so Bill said by this, it won't affect... In the long run, it's gonna be cheaper than it was originally caused, planned.
This is all been paid for by the Chalk Town?
Chalk Town Nation. But it has to be approved by the county commissioners. You wanna read the email from Michael?
What's it say?
No.
And it's just explaining it.
Oh, explaining about the brigada.
Right, the... And then where they had to do the beetle, uh, survey, it changed it up.
They finding beetles? One.
We had to buy, they had to buy credits.
Had to buy beetle credits?
Or it was shut...
I wish we had time to talk about the beetle credits.
Yeah, or it was shut the project down.
That, that is, that is highway robbery. No, I don't know. If you have a little land, you wanna keep a beetle that lives one year, you can make a lot of money.
Martin Owen?
Yes.
Martin Bird?
Yeah. I say we're both gonna sign here, but just one part here. Yes. Assam County, Martin Owen, Kansas City.
There's two different forms that have to be signed. Here.
Mr. Preston, sit over and bid, book the fire department. We can't do that till eleven o'clock, so... Anybody have anything they want to talk about? You're twenty-five, twenty minutes.
Talked to Matt Webster about the heat area on the second floor, and he made him up here, and we went up the... Looked it all over. He's working up a cost now to put conventional force air, heat air in the second floor.
Now, Randy, will that just be in the offices? That won't be for the hallway too, will it?
Well, it can be, uh...
'Cause I didn't know how much it drift down, you know what I mean?
Well, uh, basically what this would consist of was, we had to go there by the fire escape door. We'd have to clear an area out there. That means taking the books out and, and cutting some of the old jail out of there to make room for the air handlers. And then we'd have to pierce that stucco wall that goes out over into the courthouse or the courtroom. And then he would have to hang two sets of ductwork, one going down the north side and one going down the south side. And then they'd have registers dropping out all through there, and then pick up also the jury room and that office that's up there. I'm not sure what office that is. And then he was gonna try to figure out how to do the offices on this end with all the force air. If we could do that, and it's, it's, uh... In reach, we could possibly cut off the water system that's being used to do the top, the, the second and the first floor down. Just use it for just the first floor. By doing that, we might have enough capacity to suffice for a couple, two or three years. Uh, and eventually try to replace this system with, with another unit. The, uh, the life expectancy on the split heat and cooling systems of... This is what Matt told me, I don't know a lot about it, but he said the pros are they're easy to install and are convenient because each room would have its own thermostat, controls its own temperature. The downfall is, is the life expectancy's eight to ten years, which is pretty short when you're looking at the cost. The other thing is aesthetically, for the looks, the courthouse would be a compressor setting out each office. And there'd be plumbing coming up the wall going inside to transfer the pre-owned. So, uh, we discussed this earlier. We didn't, no, just think that was a very good idea to do it that way, but... It might give us a couple, two or three years if we could get that fixed up there and then just use this system that's in place. It's still, there's still water flowing upstairs in the old jail.
Well, that, that'd take a lot of burden off of it to not have to...
Right, it's...
Service up to things.
It would only be servicing one-third of what it was designed for. And it, it may hold out that long, you know? That would give us some time to gather finances and, and ideas on how to take care of this one down here. Beyond that, it'd be crawl space up there, plus the jail, the room, it, it makes it real easy for a place to handle air. And the gas is already up there. We probably have to run new electrical circuits. But, uh, if we did do something like that, it would mean that we would all have to make that courtroom available to get up in the ceiling. He said that'd probably be the best way to work it is, is just move all the benches and everything over in the center. And then take down the roof tiles so that they could put the ductwork in on the north side and then on the south side. So I told him if, if, uh... So that he didn't have to worry about doing that, that we would take care of cleaning out the jail, you know, getting the area up there that we need to set the air handlers. And then move all the, the fuses and stuff out of the way so that, that he'd have access to that roof. And that we would arrange for the staff lane that he needs to work off of.
When are you gonna know?
As soon as he gets back there.
It'd be better off for the county if had to pay extra probably to work on after-hour weekend schedules.
Because when they start, they can just keep on going, no interruptions or anything. I told, oh, Daryl did that on the field. They want, they did on the weekends.
He would come with his number one. Wouldn't get it wrong. Got the colors picked out, that's always part.
So the focus meeting went real good.
I wish we'd had a few more here, but yes, it went good. And I think... I think it changed some perceptions, maybe a little bit, you know, in the morale and stuff. I think it did. And I think everybody works it. I think they're excited about it. Things are, things are...
I was impressed with her.
Yeah?
She's got a background, Martin.
What are we gonna do about Karen's floor?
Well...
Has anybody actually crawled under it and took a look at it? See what kind of shape the wood's in? Is it dry rotted?
Maybe I think.
We had it, yeah, a couple, um, we had to push the wood, and they got all that white stuff.
I think we're gonna go room by room. Just take the floor out, block it off, put some screenings in there, and pour concrete. And I mean, I know we, and if we went room by room, we wouldn't shut Karen's office down, where we might have shut down for there too, but you know, wouldn't we shut down for the whole project? Because that floor and that ground, it just, it just keeps going south. In the books, like I said, we talked about this before, legislation has not passed that. Where you put that on microphone, keeping the books, it's not an option. We're gonna keep them, and it just keeps getting heavier.
I had sent Bill Thompson texts asking him about insurance on the, uh, to the general contractor for Mr. Ryder.
Mm-hmm.
Take care of this, and if it's a probably not on a one-shot basis, we can get a quote for an annual policy that would cover all of our...
So we thought we could get, get them on the job?
I'm surprised that, that did job for, required additional insurance requirements from the government, SpaceX and them. Buying it just for one job.
Yeah, if you already had insurance, then they just didn't add to it, probably.
They had a kind of damage to it.
Well, at least if they worked after hours and nobody was in here, would we need, would it be that, period, we have insurance?
Yes.
You still have to wear about a ball or something, somebody come on in and get me...
Works comp, sure.
Well, I was, when I was thinking about it, I was thinking about it, just somebody walking through that door slipping on some things, that I was thinking about more.
Yeah, you have to make sure that work is comped and liability insurance.
The kind of, in what you're talking about, it'd probably fall back on the county anyway because they would be working direct for county. And you'd be in the county to sell it, so... But it's still, if they caused an accident, if there was an accident, it would probably...
I might just call Adco, see what they, talk to their insurance department, see what they say about that.
Back to Karen's, uh, problem with all the floors, is there much, is all the plumbing in that crawl space?
Awesome, it is.
Electrical?
I don't think the electrical is. It's in the roof, isn't it? I've been, Randy, I believe we could take one room apart at a time for this. Be like seeing that four of them.
What do you think about that Karen?
We could tile it, or tile it or whatever. You too, you're gonna do something. We're gonna be sitting on top of there.
How much crawl space is in it?
It varies from the west to east. I think it's a little higher on southeast corner, doesn't it, Florida? It's looked like, about like that when took the floor out, hasn't it? I mean, you'd have to put some screenings in there if you're gonna pour same empty wood, like this. I know you get a pump truck to see, I don't know about a pump truck to strain this.
No, you'd have to put them in there.
But I don't think... Unless they ever pass that, if you put on microphone, it's just gonna keep getting heavier.
It don't make any difference if the floor's bad, it's, it'll continue getting... It don't make any difference if the floor's bad, it's, it'll continue getting worse, it's just like that hallway over there, it's soft, it's on it right now. Things just not getting enough ventilation underneath it. Probably the original floors, the ones that's built, probably, combination. Probably wet on there.
So is the whole building, that way, or is your extension?
We wouldn't have to tackle the whole thing at one time, what I'm getting at. Well, I don't think we would, the whole building, you know?
Can you have a kitchen on your?
Well, we have a break room.
Break room? Yeah, you have a break room facilities. With all that plumbing that has to be dealt with, it's concrete floor.
Is there any plumbing in the room where you store the books?
Yeah.
In our office.
Right, no.
In the bag.
Well, most of the bookshelves is done with plumbing.
We have some stuff in that room.
Yeah, we have some stuff. That's just my suggestion, is a four seven, you know, at one time.
That's, to me, is a logical fix, going with all that weight that you have to deal with.
Unless they pass that leveling, it's not going, it's just going to keep getting heavier.
Is there a room that doesn't have plumbing that you could store the books in, if you did that?
We don't have any room that does.
It's not going to be as simple, uh, I mean, that's an easy fix. The, it's not simple to do one room at a time, though. I've done those projects before. You can't just go up to a wall and stop like it would, it would, and just tie on, you know, because you're filling, you're going to fill wherever you stop at. You're going to continue filling, you're going to pour concrete. Wherever you stop at, the fill don't just stop right there, you're going to have to, it's going to keep going. I mean, if you're on the outside wall, it's fine, but on the inside wall.
You couldn't warm up and have the rebar stick out of the forms?
On the concrete, yes, but not on the fill. When you're putting fill in, you're going to, the fill's not going to stop straight up and down. You can't compact it just straight up and down right there unless you lay a block wall or something for a head wall to go up against.
Oh, we might have to do something like that, and just.
I mean, I understand you're going to have to do it, uh, in phases, but you can't just do each room because then you've got to, you've got to have access to the room, number one. And for instance, our back door or a window, and if some rooms don't have access, you know, you can't just do this room, and then we're going to do this room, and there's no windows or doors for a conveyor or auger or pump truck whatsoever, you've got to have access to get the materials to it.
They do that, then.
Unless you have wheelbarrow all in.
Or, you know, a pump, they do, a pump where, you know, it's a big hose, and you could, but even that'd be a lot of.
Yeah, pumping the concrete is, is not as a big, I mean, it's a pump, but the other, all the manual labor and material and stuff would have to be conveyed or wheelbarrow.
You, you think of like a metal keyway form, like, and then you can pour.
Yeah, you can tie the concrete together from room to room, but, but as far as putting the fill in, put two foot thick or whatever, you know, you can't compact it and stop it somewhere. You're going to have to have, uh, some form of, uh, a head.
Well, and that's what I was saying, I don't know how, uh, I know you can get that metal keyway and, like you use on commercial, you know, painting. I don't know how tall you can get it. If you can get it tall enough, and then you could compact, and then just leave the portions of concrete, the concrete at the top, and then that would start to stop.
Be same as, it'll set in some type of form up to fill up again.
That's what this is, and then the rebar goes through it, but I don't know how tall you can get it.
Karen, how many new books do you make a year?
Probably one every turn three months, maybe two, sometimes it's quicker than that.
So, you moved all those ones out?
Well, we're, actually, we're trying to get, uh, no, we don't move anything out, we have them just.
It's too bad.
We're, we're having the downtime of our books, our big books, we have to keep them in there, and then we have the children books that we're going back to the old books, make them run, because we're out there.
Well, it's eleven o'clock, so we're going to discuss the shit open bid for Brooklyn Fire Department conference, and we'll see what the bid looks like.
Karen, that bid that I brought two weeks ago.
We did.
Chunky, okay.
Oh, this is one, which one, yes, this is near, I was like, go ahead, Clark, that one's good. Dunn Ford bidding thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This is from William Chevrolet. They're bidding thirty-nine thousand. They have a total price of forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. I'm assuming that's on a. It might be on Chevy.
It's a Dodge. Fifty-five hundred, it's a Dodge.
Well, now we got a fifty-five hundred Dodge for thirty-nine, nine, eight.
Okay.
And then this one here must be.
Oh, did you do two?
This forty-three, five eighty. Dunn Ford is willing to say you want for thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
So what's the Dodge and?
The Dodge is three, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars even. And this other one is for forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, what was Ford?
That's the build sheet on the.
That's the bill sheet, so you're just bidding thirty-nine, nine, eight?
Yeah, that's with the bid and brush guard.
All right. Once again, William Chevrolet's bidding thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Dunn Ford is bidding thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Is this Ford or Dodge?
This is Ford here. That's all they say.
Well, they got a Dodge place, I think, too.
Oh.
I mean, a Honda.
It's saying up, it's Ford, see? It's Ford.
Is this with the bid and brush guard?
Yes.
Okay.
It had to be on his face. I mean, if it makes. So one, so you're happy with the Ford?
Got to go with the cheapest price.
Well, I know, but I, I always ask, is y'all fire department, you okay?
I'm fine with Ford.
And you're paying Ford, and you're paying one payment, paying it all? Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we accept Dunn Ford's bid for thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for Brooklyn Fire Department, and it'll be a one payment. Out of the tax money. Yeah, you can get with Dunn Ford and get them a payone, and it'll do it too. Well, now where's the business, I'm going to make a motion, we're done.